Okay, we are back in open session and we did discuss item number 12 on the agenda, which is a closed session regarding attorney-client privilege pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D.05 subdivision 3. Coming out of this closed session, we just have staff continue to continue with the conversation, correct? We don't need a motion to do that? All right, thank you. Very good. Okay. Right? We're good? All right, thank you. We're back in open session to discuss the 2026 budget.
We have to read.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's, uh, thank you for that. Motion to adjourn the regular committee of the whole meeting by Councilor Boxtonner, supported by Councilor Beyondich. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. We are now going to reconvene the special committee of the whole meeting. And the last item on the agenda is to talk about the 2026 budget and then we'll reconvene at 10:56 a.m. Thank you. Councilor Boxtonner?
Thank you. Quickly, before we get started, I do have to leave at 11:30 for a work commitment. Thank you.
Okay. Well, hopefully we'll have, uh, we'll have some progress made moving forward. I think Councilor Paulson has a number of issues to show us before it and hopefully it will be expedited in an efficient manner. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have page numbers written down.
Okay, thank you.
Page 33 in community development, and I know we already answered this. We are increasing professional services account 319 by 30,500 to account for, oh Jenny, to account for SEH. But if we are not doing, if we kind of slow down on some projects, do we need to have that high of a dollar amount in there? Those were mainly for internal projects and not external that would have, that cost would follow the project. But was there anything internal that we forecasted we would be specifically doing this year that we would need to continue that amount in the budget?
I think I actually reduced it from what they had proposed to. Yes, I think we can definitely keep fine tuning that one.
Just maybe look at that.
We can keep fine tuning that one.
And then, um, sorry, I'm picking on you, Jenny. And then on the travel expense, 331, we've got 4,000 for this current budget year. We've expended zero in '24. We expended zero. Could that be looked at as well?
Yes.
Okay. Then, um, page, let's see what that was. It was page 45 under the fire department salaries. We are increasing salaries $647,000, but we're also increasing overtime by 25,000. I'm wondering, because if you look at the police side, it's different. It's a decrease in salaries due to the fact that they're not forecasting full staffing and then increase in overtime because that current staff would be working more overtime. So this is different and I'm just wondering what that is.
There was some errors in the 2025 budget, the way it was calculated for salaries. So I went and corrected it.
Okay.
And then also reduced, like I mentioned, the reality of what we staff versus what we were able to obtain. Brought that down a little bit.
Okay. And I do see the overtime was reduced.
Yeah.
But it is also increased, so.
Also increased, right.
Okay. Okay. Just an observation on that. The next item, page 47. So if we go to the, on the operating transfer in of 1.546701.68, if you go to the corresponding page, and I think that's page 60.
65.
Where it says MECC, those, they're off by about 100,000. It doesn't match. One's 1.4, one's 1.5.
It should be 1.49150.
So 1.4, so that will change.
That will change that. Yep, I printed the wrong page.
Okay.
That would be why. I have two ITMEC budgets in the packet.
Am I right on the first one, Brian? Page 47.
Page 66 and 67 are the updated, with the updated number on there.
Oh, 66 and 67 are updated?
Yeah.
Oh, all my notes are on 47.
That's what we said, yeah, that's what I said. 66 and 67 are the corrected budget.
Oh, dear. Okay.
Sorry about that.
Oh, okay. So let me. So then, um, but there is a correction on the, it's 1.491.
Yep.
Okay. So that equals each other?
Yep.
Okay. The transfer out and transfer in. Okay. Then, um, under the sponsorships, which is on the revenue side, we are predicting 80,000 less in sponsorship revenue. And I know we had talked about this before, but like sponsorships are, could be the naming rights, overall blanket, dasher boards, like anything to do with, or do we have that in a separate, like, should we be separating those out is what I'm asking? Because some of those are an annual, like the dasher boards, you could do that annually, but a naming right might be once every five years or 10 years. So I'm trying to get an accurate depiction of revenue that would be coming in annually versus a one-time shot in the arm. And maybe it's being paid for, like the naming rights for the building is five grand a month.
And one of the reasons, or the reason that you're seeing this decrease this year is the final payments for the scoreboard sponsorship have been made, so we don't have any more of that money coming in. So we are adjusting the revenue forecast appropriately for not having that come in.
And I totally understand that. I'm just wondering if we should, like, the stuff that's stationary would be, like, in my opinion, anything that's fixed. Your scoreboard, your building signs, your ballroom, you know, naming signs, what, those are fixed. Anything that can be removed and changed, those would be maybe separate if we could do that. Because, um, so I have a question. On the dasher boards, I was told the youth hockey is getting the proceeds on the dasher boards. Is that accurate?
Yes and no. In Chevy Arena, they are buying the dasher boards from us and then including dasher boards in sponsorship packages that they have. Therefore, they get revenue. We are still getting all of the same revenue that we are budgeting in there. Does that make sense?
So we're selling it to them to sell their, will they want to sponsor?
Yes.
And how about in the Toyota Arena?
Hundred percent our building.
And that, that dashboard revenue goes to the city?
Yes, as does the.
The other.
The Chevy dashboard revenue comes to the ITMEC's budget also.
Is that being sold at a discount because they're a nonprofit then?
Uh, we have worked out a multi-board discount, but it's not a huge discount for them.
Okay. So maybe we could separate those things that are fixed, like the naming issues, and then those things that are a monthly revenue based upon rental or whatever. So the sponsorship decrease is in due to the scoreboard sunsetting its fulfillment or fulfilling.
Their payment.
The obligation payment.
Yes.
Yep, that's what I thought. And then, so that was the other thing, was just that the operating transfer in matched. And then on marketing and advertising, gotta go, is it the same? Okay. It is the same. So as of, up till this year, we have spent, so we, we put a marketing budget together last year, Brian, of 60,000. Of that marketing budget, we have only tapped into $26,000. So should we be decreasing that marketing budget to reflect the actual expenditure? You'd have to increase it a little bit, but we're already at the end of October. This goes all the way through the end of October.
And.
So if we're really not using that, because one of the things from the audit said that if we subsidize, like they're saying 900 and some thousand, but we're authorizing 1.491 million in, in subsidization this, you know, this year. So I'm just trying to see what we can reduce to offset that. What S&amp;P and Moody's is gonna look at is how much our ambulance is underwater and how much we are, I guess, facilitating deficit at the ITMEC.
One of the reasons that we have not expended all of the funds that we intended to expend this year is because you will see there are other expenditure lines that are over. So as a staff, we made the conscious decision to try to not operate the building in as deep of a deficit by not spending as much in the marketing area this year. So we did not do some of the marketing things that we normally would, trying to offset the deficit this year.
So shouldn't we be really reflecting on what is accurate and put marketing where it should be put, you know, if you've gone over on expense, put that where it should be, like budget higher than? Like instead of moving your budget around, shouldn't we be budgeting a little bit better?
And that's what we're trying to do in this next, in the 2026 budget, is presenting more of the accurate budget, allowing us not to have to rob from Peter to pay Paul.
May I just intercede just for one moment? You're talking about that, a marketing issue with the $60,000 budget. And being a layperson in the elected body, looking at it from the outside, I mean, we have a marketing director. And I'm sure the marketing director is working diligently to try to market the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. But I don't think we're marketing it good enough. I think we need to market it more. How we do that is, is up to staff to determine. And so if there's $60,000 in that budget and we have to try to get, go visit a, a agent for a comedian or whatever needs to be done or whatever has to be done, I think we, that marketing budget has to be there to do that. But we have to make sure that that money is being properly expended to market it in order to take that, whatever marketing money is, and to quadruple or, or tenfold over any new event we have coming in here. So, I mean, just a thought, a comment to make. Councilor Paulson, please continue. Thank you.
Thank you. It was just a note. I just, you know, if we're gonna put it in there, then it maybe should be expended, like on marketing. But if we're not expensing it or expending it, then I would take it out of the budget. That's all. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, okay, so then, I feel like. Okay, so 48. Sorry, now I gotta jump around because we. So on page 49 is the library. We're increasing salaries by $18,900. Is that due to some staff moving or halftime moving, switching, or what is that due to?
Wage increases.
Yeah. So that would be due to a wage increase. Okay. So that would be medical insurance. Okay, so then if you go to page 50 and you see what the, what the actual year was in 2024, actual expense, 944,621. Year-to-date, we're only at 842,469,000, but we've increased that budget to $1,085,597. And I know Jody does an amazing job operating within her budget, but if the numbers don't support that, Britt, can, why can't we decrease the budget? I mean, you're not cutting staff, you're not cutting anything, you're just, if you look at what the actual numbers were from 2024, the total is, the total expense was 944621. So why are we increasing to almost 1.2 million if that's not necessary?
Could you hold that thought for a moment?
Yeah.
Did you have a comment on that particular issue, Councilor Johnson, please? If I may, if you may.
I think it's important to look at the staffing levels and what positions were not filled and what did not get accomplished in 2024 because we did not necessarily have all of the positions filled throughout the entire year. And again, staff get burnt out when they have to do not only their job, but other people's jobs. So I don't think it's realistic to just view numbers on a page without having the whole picture of what was happening, which staff weren't there, what other things occurred to create that variance. If we didn't spend it, great, but saying we can't spend it next year severely limits the ability of the staff to do their jobs and to have the correct people on staff to do what they need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I just disagree with that. I feel like everybody can tighten up everywhere. So if we can, I would like to see that happen. It is numbers that you just need to manipulate to see if we can make it a reduction and not have anything to do with staff. Okay, then going to page 52, which is the park department. We're seeing an increase in salaries, but we're also seeing a, an increase in overtime and part-time. And I'm wondering why that is if we are increasing salaries? And that's for a full staff budget?
I tell you, the overtime is because we're trying, we were trying to be more to what actually occurred rather than what we did in 2025. We were at, year, we were at about $10,000.
And what would be considered overtime in the park department?
Tree falls, bowing. Be in the ITMEC, yeah.
So could that be looked at? Because if that should be going into the, as I agree with you, they go into the Iron Trail Motors Event Center overtime, and that should be coded correctly to that department.
Brian, the salaries part-time, I know that you worked on that one with Sheri, but was the increase in the salaries for part-time?
We had put the administrative assistant and the maintenance position 50% into the park budget and 50% in the ITMEC budget because both of them have crossover duties and spend about 50% of their time in each department. So we were budgetarily splitting them out to, to reflect what they do.
What about the part-time? Part-time?
Part-time is for the summer students that we have. In, in the park budget, it is the summer students. In the recreation budget, it is the skate shack attendance.
Okay, and we hired a lot more summer students this, in '25.
Nine.
What we're budgeting for, for '26?
Nine, was it not? Eight?
Um, and this is only budgeting for the park summer students. It's not all the summer students that the city hires.
Okay. Thank you for that.
These are just the ones that are assigned for the park and I've budgeted for the four that we have historically gotten.
Okay. So that was all I have on that one. Then on page 55, under the police department, we have a decrease in their salaries of 135,000, 347, and a decrease in part-time, but we have an increase in the overtime. So is that, so what we're doing is we're saying we probably are not going to be fully staffed, so we've reduced the budget to be fully staffed, but we've increased the overtime budget to allow for the current staff to work the shifts that need to be worked and then pay accordingly.
Again, based on actuals, if you look at '24 and '25, '24, we had 142,000 for overtime and then already at 120 at the end of October.
So, and I think that was the confusion I had with the, with the fire department.
Yeah, yeah. And then salaries part-time, that was an error. We had put the CSOs into that part-time.
The CSOs, okay.
Really, they're full-time, so we put it in the full-time.
Okay. And then the other question I have, and I just, just circled this, is shop with a cop. Is that all, is that all donations?
Yeah, it is.
So there's a, there's a revenue line that would have.
I see it's not on this report, but there is a revenue line that they do get quoted to.
So if there's a, so could we have that revenue line added?
Okay.
Okay. And then, I'm trying to go in order here. Under the streets, on page 57, salaries on streets, we went from 880,000 in 2024 and we budgeted 1.66 million. We're only at 727,000. Why are we increasing an additional 56,000 for year 2026?
And staff, if we don't have, Rasfit mentioned last time he was here, he is down-staffed right now. So our numbers for this year are, the actual numbers this year are because we are down-staffed. If we are fully staffed with the raises that are planned for FCM, that's what that would be, 1.122617.
So the actual current year-to-date overtime is 23,000, which we budgeted 20 on short staff as it is. So why would we not decrease the salaries if the overtime is remaining the same budgeted?
We're hoping to not be short-staffed.
If I could also.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, just to point out, we budget, so a lot of times our snow, our painting, things like that, we don't know necessarily what that's going to be. So we budget that, those salaries into the streets, and some of those salaries may end up in, into the snow removal line or the, the, the street signs line. So kind of because we don't know which section people are gonna work in in that moment, they're all getting budgeted into the streets, but then they get separated when they actually work it into the different sections of the departments. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so then those year-to-date, year-to, like the current year year-to-date should be reflecting, reflecting that. And I'm just not seeing that. I'm looking right at the year-to-date current in the streets.
Yeah, but, and if you, you know, kind of, you scroll down and you look at, let me see, I'm just, I'm trying to bring up, and I don't know if it's on there, the, the snow removal, the salaries that they actually worked in snow removal would be in the, in the snow removal section of public works, but the budget is in streets because we don't necessarily know what that's going to be.
That doesn't make sense. Snow removal, you mean our budget of 210,000 is within the streets, 1.122 million dollar budget?
I believe so. I believe that's how it was budgeted previously, is that, am I, maybe I'm speaking out of pocket, Britt.
Right, yeah.
So ice and snow removal, when they, all those line items there, those aren't their own, that's not its own separate budget that we're putting into our overall general fund levy?
It is.
So it can't be both?
Right.
So which is it?
That's a good question. Yeah, you're right.
This is the problem.
But what if we don't use all the ice and snow, then do we still code people there even if they didn't do it? That's the.
So my question is, why can't we reduce the budget amount for streets of 1.122 million dollars? If we've only spent 880 in 2024 and as of 2000, as of October 31st, 2025, we've spent 727,000. Why are we looking at such a huge increase?
We're hoping to be fully staffed.
Fully staffed with what?
Two HGOs. We made an offer to two heavy equipment operators.
We just hired two.
Yeah, that's what, that's, we haven't had them for a year. They've been gone since December of '24.
But if your fully staff number was here, that can't be that much of an increase. That doesn't make sense. The math doesn't add up, Britt.
1,086404.
112, 1.122 million.
From 1,08640.
From 1.066, $56,000 increase. So I'm, I'm just concerned as to what, why we're doing it this way. And then we've got salaries in ice and snow removal, which, that's a separate, that's not included in here, that's not, roll that up into it, it's additional.
So if I may, I know you're, you're, you're moving down your list there, but what I'd like to do, if that's possible, I know that we have a couple of councils that have to leave. So my question is, is before, if we could interrupt one moment, Councilor Paulson, is there anything that you, before you have to leave, want to add or say nothing? Okay, please continue, Councilor Paulson. Thank you.
I'll go quick. I think that needs to be looked at.
I'll take a look.
And adjusted. Then on minor equipment and small tools on page 58, ice and snow removal, are we saying that we're adding an additional $20,000 for something specific in mind, a piece of equipment in there? Or, it says street maintenance materials, 60,000, so we're increasing it by 20.
Salt, salt and sand.
Salt and sand, okay. Then down below, where we've got a capital outlay of a street lighting, $100,000. What is that for?
That's the five globe lights we approved last year for the purchase.
Five globe lights?
Yep.
And we approved those last year and it's payable in '26?
The 12, 18-month lead time.
Then under page 60, this is the public works maintenance, I believe. Under 221 equipment parts, we're increasing by $102,000. Is there a reason for that?
It's historical. It's in 2024, we used $218,000 and '25 at the end of October, it's 177,000 when we had budgeted 18.
Can we get a break? So, but we're increasing that budget by 102, okay, so we spent actual year-to-date 177. I see what you're doing. Can we find out what equipment parts those are? Because maybe there's a way we need to figure that out differently if we're spending that much on equipment and parts. And last one I have is, okay, we already went through the.
Uh, Councilor Paulson, did you have a question on that particular item?
I had an answer.
Okay, could you give, have an answer and then we'll move on to the last item from Councilor Paulson?
Equipment, but parts budget is because we have equipment that is antiquated and it costs extra money to have it fabricated instead of regular upkeep of newer equipment.
Yeah, and I think Councilor Paulson is asking for a breakdown of that.
And then I am looking at page 63. We've got the skating program, top revenue line. We're expecting an additional 25,000 in revenue, which is great, but down below. But down below, the matching 248, we're decreasing the, we're, I guess, reducing the expense by 28,000. Why had we budgeted 63,000 as an expense for the skating show to begin with? Or for the skating program? I was, I'm just curious and.
Look back, I don't know why we had it so high, what we were expecting to happen.
Because I know that does, I think that generates revenue, that one.
It does, yes.
So I just wanna look, is that number accurate?
Right.
For the expense? And then I believe that's all that I have.
I think I have an answer for that one. I think I have an answer for that one. There's two figure skating show expense lines and I think it equals that same 63,000-ish, they just broke it up into two lines. So line item 241 and 248.
Right. Thank you.
I should ask Brian, I'm sorry, Brian, you were here, I didn't, I should have asked you.
I just have two things here. First of all, in the budget, we approved the, for Brian Silver to, to negotiate their tennis facility use agreement and then the golf course professional agreement. So I, I get the tennis official use because we're paying for that, but the golf course professional agreement, there, there might be a, a request. I don't know when the last time Mr. Finger was got a raise, you know, and, and of course, the greenskeeper as well, who has, you know, not been compensated. I know this is a professional services contract with the Golf Course Pro. So my question is, is that gonna be a counter for the 2026 budget? It'll have to be a counter, so we don't know what that number's going to be yet. All right, thank you. Brian, thank you.
Counselor Bachschneider is correct. Line 241 is a new line in the budget. Council had asked us to break out the cost of the figure skating show that we have in March from the rest of the program. So the expenditures for the figure skating program, which is line 248, that would be the cost of our learn-to-ski instructors, our figure skating coaches, their insurance, all of the costs that go into operating that program. The cost of the figure skating show or line 241, that would be all of the costumes, again, the coaching and choreography that goes into that show, the, the programs that we hand out, ticketing, any of that kind of expenditure that goes with it. Both of those lines are totally covered by the revenue that the figure skating program and the figure skating show generate so that this program is generating some revenue to offset the ice cost that they would use at about the same cost that youth hockey pays per hour for their program.
Quick question, Brian. What other programs, other than the skating, does, does the rec program sponsor?
Directly sponsor these days? We do not directly run any other programs. We partner with and work with parent-run boards for many different sports, but this is the only one that we are running.
Okay, that was my only question at this point in time, thank you. Okay, any other budget questions as we move forward? Counselor Paulson has a list of adjustments to be made in accounting and we have that list for you to work on, Britt, and, and Megan to work on moving forward. So is there anything else to come before the special budget meeting? Coming, the whole budget meeting, part of it today? Seeing none, we'll stand adjourned at 11:29 a.m. Thank you, everybody, have a great day, have a safe trip, bye now.